This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman.
Here.
Commissioner Gengler.
Here.
Commissioner Warren.
Here.
Commissioner Welch.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Here. All those wishing to participate in the open prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, before we go into this meeting, we place ourselves before you, for you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about us. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to respect and understand the opinions of others. Help us to value and appreciate those we are about to meet. May your light unfold us. May your spirit guide us. May your grace abound in us. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite,
that is for all.
Are there any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, there'll be a resolution adopting by the City Council of the City of Wichita regarding issuance of bonds for Christopher Carrington.
I would make a motion that we add that to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Approval of the agenda?
I so move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Approve the agenda with the addition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes five oh. Proclamations. The first one is for whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated the first Sunday of October as National Fall and Firefighters Memorial Day, and the National Fire Protection Association has designated the first full week of October as Fire Prevention Week. And whereas homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk of fire injury and death, and whereas our Kansas City Fire EMS department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires, home fire injuries, and carbon monoxide poisoning through education, prevention, and protection, and whereas the City of our Kansas City's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fires, especially in their homes and kitchen, and whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, with a focus on educating children and adults about smoke and carbon monoxide alarms, their necessity, and how the sounds they make help to save lives. Now therefore, I Scott Rogers, Mayor of the City of our Kansas City, Kansas, call upon all citizens to observe the week of October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week in our Kansas City, and urge all citizens to check their homes for fire hazards. Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the activities and efforts of the art Kansas City Fire EMS Department. I further call upon all citizens of our Kansas City to solemnly observe Sunday, October 3rd, 2021, as National Fall and Firefighters Memorial Day in our Kansas City, and on the 40th anniversary of this event, in honor of those firefighters who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of their duty. Now we have people from the fire department here.
Yes, can we applaud?
Come on up. Thanks. The other proclamation is whereas the National Association of Town Watch annually sponsors National Night Out, a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program, and whereas the 37th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for our Kansas City to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts, and whereas the art Kansas City community plays a vital role in assisting the art Kansas City Police Department through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in our Kansas City, and is supporting National Night Out 2021 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of our Kansas City be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our Kansas City, and whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program, and whereas this important program returns this year after a one-year hiatus due to COVID-19. Now therefore, I Mayor Scott Rogers do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of our Kansas City to join the art Kansas City Police Department and National Association of Town Watch in supporting the 37th Annual National Night Out and do by hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, as National Night Out in our Kansas City, Kansas. I further call upon all citizens to consider attending or supporting the annual National Night Out kickoff party to be held from 5:00 to 8:30 Monday, October 4th, 2021, at Wilson Park in our Kansas City. Come on up, guys. Don't be shy. I'm not always on the corner.
Go get your face in motion.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Aren't you quite there?
Thanks, guys. Next up, we have recognition of visitors. I think we have some promotions and swearing ins.
They left.
They all left.
Oh, they did.
Here, they're coming. We are.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I have the honor of recognizing some promotions and also a swearing in tonight with the Police Department. So, I would call Lieutenant Douglas, Lieutenant Stroud, and Sergeant Chinaman. So in my appointment and other leadership positions opening just over the last few months, a lieutenant promotion process was completed, and I'm pleased to announce the promotion of two lieutenants and one sergeant at this time. I will first recognize Lieutenant Nelson Douglas. He's been serving the citizens of our Kansas City since 2007. During his career, he's been assigned to patrol, detective, and most recently, a sergeant. His special assignments include field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, bike patrol, burglary task force, and handcuffing instructor. Lieutenant Douglas has been recognized by community organizations for his work to include Optimist Officer of the Year and VFW Officer of the Year, along with Department Honors of Supervisor of the Year for 2020. As I reached out to each of these members of the department, I asked them to give me an idea of what has driven them through their career, and so I'll just read what Lieutenant Douglas replied to me. I have many things in my career that drives me to put the uniform on every day, the community of our Kansas City and the trust they put in us as officers to protect them and their property. The support that I've had from this community every day I come to work is something that I will never be able to return. When I'm able to get people's property and solve their case and see the appreciation they show for our hard work drives me to keep working hard for this community. When I'm able to help a child out of a bad situation and get them into a better situation drives me to keep working the best that I can for this community. When I'm able to make a real difference in this community, whether it's solving cases, getting property back for a victim, protecting a child, or making a difference in someone's life that is in need, keeps me loving what I do.
Very good.
Oh, good, Nelson.
Next up, Lieutenant Travis Stroud. Lieutenant Stroud has been serving the citizens of our Kansas City since 2003, when he was hired as a part-time communications officer. In 2005, he became a sworn police officer. Lieutenant Stroud has worked on patrol and most recently, a sergeant detective. His collateral assignments include manager of the department's electronic evidence programs, Southern Kansas SWAT team, field training officer, bike patrol, TASER instructor, firearms instructor, rifle and shotgun armor, Glock armor. And I would share his quote. Lieutenant Stroud writes, "What drives me are the citizens we serve. Every contact is a chance to bring a little light into what may be that person's darkest time. I'm a firm believer in leaving things better than you found them, and try to carry that into each call for service, traffic stop, conversations, or even a simple hello."
Oh, Travis, that's sweet.
You okay?
No.
And last but not least, Sergeant Ted Chinaman has served the citizens of our Kansas City since 2012. He's worked on patrol and in the Investigations Division as Drug Task Force Officer. His special assignments include TASER instructor, defensive tactics instructor, firearms instructor, racial profiling and bias-based policing instructor, alert instructor, which is Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, bike patrol, field training officer, former drug recognition expert. And when asked to give a quote, Sergeant Chinaman says, "What drives me at this junction in my career is seeing the pride that my family has for me. I also have a strong sense of purpose, knowing that my actions positively impact the community that we serve, and being able to pass that on to the younger officers." So like I said, I wanted to take the opportunity to emphasize these promotions tonight. Consent planning is very important at any police department and any organization. With these and future promotions, we are putting the department in a good place that we can carry on the great work that we've done in our community over the last several years. I would like to take an opportunity to thank all the family members for these officers that are here tonight as well, showing their support for these officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for what you do.
Thank you for what you guys do.
We gotta swear an in.
I also have the honor of welcoming a new police officer to the force. So I'll tell you a little bit about.
Snuck up on you there.
Brandon Casares began employment with the art Kansas City Police Department on the 14th, 2021. Brandon successfully completed all phases of the hiring process, which was long and arduous. It included interview boards, intense background investigation, polygraph tests, psychological tests, online personality tests, physical capacity test, drug and alcohol screening, and a medical exam. So we really put him through it, right? Officer Casares is a graduate of the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, Basic Law Enforcement Training Class Number 270. He's been working as a full-time police officer in the City of Kingman, Kansas. We are truly excited to have Brandon on board with us. He is an our Kansas City native. During his interview process, and I was probably going to mention this, named Sergeant John Mers, he named him as a role model who took the time to talk with him while attending our Kansas City High School when Sergeant Mers was in SRO many, many years ago. It's really good to hear those kind of stories, especially from people that are now coming onto the department.
I'm sure you'll get taller.
At this time, I would ask the city clerk to administer the oath of honor to Officer Brandon Casares.
May I be of honor to repeat that for me? Of all my honor, I will never betray my badge, my integrity, my character, for the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Kansas, my community, and the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief Burr.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one comment it looks like related to items not on the agenda, Mr. Bob Matthews. On up.
Commissioner, Commissioner, City Council. It's not a problem. I think we may end the city more than me. We have a drainage problem. You'll recall the last time we had a rain, a couple nights ago.
We did?
Two and a half months ago. We had a drain. People on coming down D Street. What I was going to talk about is my house is 900 North D. You've got East Pine here, then you've got a drainage ditch, and then you have Linden Street. Okay. A lot of people think that Pine Street stops at the alley. Pine Street does not stop at the alley. Pine Street goes all over the railroad tracks if you could get there. And you'll have to share this picture, but I want to show you what Pine Street looks like from the alley towards the railroad track. Linden Street was designed to handle a lot of water from a lot of rains and everything. And it turns and goes right into the drainage that runs parallel to the railroad track. This is taken from Linden Street looking down the same area that the water should flow to.
Oh, where the grass and stuff's at.
The next area is the area in between Linden Street and Pine Street. There is a brick drainage down through there. Little brick all the way to the drain. I took two pictures. I took one from D Street looking back to the east, and then I took one from the west. The first one, I tried to keep note just to keep neighborhood looking nice. And the second one. When I said rain the last time, it was about two inches. It's confusing to go through that particular bit. Ground out and everything. I started two and a half multiple inch rain was here to try to get something taken through. That's why I'm here. Yeah, we got to the city, not me. My house is high enough, I'm not going to get flooded well, I can't say that. You can't have this inside of my street. That one area that I showed you there, that is brick.
Basically, the weeds and stuff, that's stuff stopping that water from there.
You just go in and mow it. Used to be, we said that mowing the brick from then they treated it with a stick and kept the weeds and the grass. So it's smooth all the way through. I think it was the last year or somebody said, "What's the railroad's called?" Another hour's mowed. Drainage ditch goes down about maybe 40 yards past Pine Street, turns back to the east and goes under railroad track, feeds in to ponds on the east side of the street. So.
So is that city's property?
No, we claimed that about two years ago. Linden where it curves, dead south, you just build up weeds and then grass clippings get in there, and also the brick through there cleaned out up to about two years ago. It just builds up again, so. But as far as the ditch paralleling the railroad, I'm not sure.
Well, we got a cold and unfortunate officer. I guess he grabbed the city up on that. I mean, seriously.
I was just going to say, it used to be that the city kept the brick when the last one down and they kept Pine Street. They kept the drainage through tomorrow. And then it seemed like last year I got the story. They got one time last year. I cannot tell you who mowed it, whether it was the railroad or whether it was the city. It used to be it was mowed at least once a month to keep that down so you can have drainage. As you can tell, especially getting the armor, it's not very drainage. And I think it's pathetic when we have citizens that cannot go down the street in our city because they're afraid to go through the water.
Is that on D Street that the dips?
It would be between Pine and Linden.
Does that always flow down?
Yes, a long time ago, before we got electronic cars, I used to sit on the front porch and make bets on whether to drown it out. That's been a long time ago, Commissioner.
Righto.
But that's how it used to be. That's it. May I ask you, listening to this? If you can do something, not so much for me, but for the city.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bill. Seeing other names listed on the, on the audience to speak that I thought on the agenda, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I so move. We approve the consent agenda is granted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Onto new business.
Hold a public hearing to receive public comment regarding wastewater treatment project in the KDAC, low electricity state revolving loan program.
I make a motion. We open a public hearing to receive public comment. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Public hearing is open. Come on up, Daniel.
Quick presentation. If anybody has any questions. So, just some pressure. The city wastewater treatment plant is located south of Pierce and west of King Street. And just a quick review of how this plant operates and the conditions for the infrastructure that's there currently. All the city's wastewater comes down into this building, which is the inflow pump station that houses the pumps that take everything from the gravity system and get it into the system up to, there's also screening that are in there, the blowers, currently the motor control center is all housed within that. That goes up to an area that's grit removal. Does exactly what it says. If there is grit, inorganic material that passes through the screens, it's collected there, and that grit is then put into the adjoining adjacent building that has a classifier to the water lab and ultimately be ready for disposal. The water continues on into two primary clarifiers. And that's the first settling basins that the plant operates. Then we'll go past and get into what are called trickle-in filters. These are 80-foot diameter concrete basins that are filled with rock. The wastewater is distributed through these four arms across the rock, creates a treatment, I guess, area that can work and is put into the overall, the effluent from these two facilities will come down. An amount, and this may range throughout different seasons, is then re-pumped out of this building. There's two recirculation pumps that just pump up into the aeration basin. And there, the blowers that are in the inflow pump station provide air to provide an higher degree of treatment, continues back through. Ultimately, the water that's not recirculated will go into the final clarifier. And once again, another settling basin. And then the water continues on into this southern end. That's the UV disinfection area facility, then ultimately goes to discharge. The solids component of this facility primarily includes the digester complex. There's two digesters. They collect both primary sludge that comes out of the primary clarifiers, as waste sludge out of the final clarifier. Is all put into these digesters. It's an anaerobic, i.e. no air system. The solids are processed actually to a class A level and ultimately processed and deposited in the drying beds on the western end of the site. And so that's kind of the three-minute version of how the plant works. This project will include several items of improvements throughout this, throughout this plant. Number one, in the inflow pump station, there will be a washer compactor conveyor that takes the screenings off of the affluent screens and deposits them into a dumpster that is then disposed of, that will be replaced, as well as other code and HVAC components within that. There's also going to be some demolition done within this in that the blowers are currently in here. They will be moved up to this area. There'll be new blowers, but so the existing ones will be removed. But that's the major work that's done in that facility. The grit removal system will pull out the equipment and replace it with brand new. We'll also have a new grit classifier in the adjacent building. And then what we'll look at is there'll be a new electrical building that will be housed to the west of the implant or inflow pump station. That will include a brand-new motor control center that will have capabilities of expansion if needed in the future. Mentioned the blowers, there'll be another pad that will be built up adjacent to the aeration basin. That will have new blowers on there, but it'll also be sized appropriately and considerations for future use as needed. We'll go to, jump number, number six. Or no, okay, so within the recirculization building, the two pumps that are there currently, one of them will be rebuilt and then brought back in and reinstalled. The trickle-in filters, what that will, they will take the mechanisms, the distribution mechanisms on top of the rock, the arms that distribute all the water on both of these, remove them and replace them with brand new. We'll go to the final. We'll go to the final large clarifier, another eighty-foot basin. And all the equipment out of there will be removed and replaced, including the launders. And that will be a little bit more efficient system than the current one. And will also include covers on the launders.
That's eight.
Will replace the existing UV equipment and controls within this. The controls will actually, this is a depressed area below ground. The controls will actually be brought up on top. So that has a potential for backup within the gravity part of that during high flows. So electric controls up and out. And then another big part of this is the complete renovation of the existing admin lab and digester complex. Will include new covers for both digesters. It will include a new gas handling system and flare. It will also have, the underground will replace some solids handling pumps. And we'll also look at replacing all the piping underneath that consideration. All of that together, this process, the construction likely will start at the beginning of the year, January, February. And is slated to last until approximately April of twenty.
At the bottom, on the right.
Where's the lab building will be at? The building that we're gonna build at?
That building will be up. It'll be up in that court.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be up here as the city's having a lab.
Yeah. And then you might also talk about the wiring. That's nineteen fifty wiring.
Yeah.
That's all gonna be rewired.
Yes. The wiring will be replaced throughout. There's also going to be code upgrades. One of, you mentioned that admin building. Currently, the wastewater staff is housed, their offices and their lab. And base lockup codes now, they're not supposed to be in there within a digester complex with the gas handling. So they're gonna be moved into the new building. With all that said, this is a large-scale improvement. The approximate budget for this project is twelve million, almost twelve million, seven hundred thousand dollars. The city will be looking at applying for an SRF loan for ten and a half million dollars. Also utilize current budget reserve funds as well as the Marpa, the American Rescue Plan, monies. So with it in that, they're currently getting some final projections. But the current projections are looking in a step rate scenario through up to twenty twenty-four. That the base rate would increase approximately nine dollars per month. And the user rate per thousand gallons would increase by approximately one dollar and seventy cents per thousand to address these conditions.
That'd be a nine-dollar increase over three years, not per year, but up to.
Over the three years. So yes, at the twenty twenty-four timeframe.
It'll be to the nine dollars, yeah.
What it would be at. So I guess with that, if there's any questions from the commission or the public, I would be happy to address those.
You might also talk about that, in that, what we talked about, that some of that money in there is on that phosphorus that we're gonna have to treat phosphorus, you know, that's coming in that budget too. You might explain that.
There is another step that will likely, not likely, will happen after this project that will include a new nutrient removal requirement for the city, removal of phosphorus. At this time, this plant was never developed or designed to be extremely effective in phosphorus removal. It does a pretty good job actually with it. But the new levels will require the city to augment their biological treatment with a chemical treatment to remove and collabulate the phosphorus. And Commissioner Warren is correct in that we currently have some budget projected through this next step to include some of those costs. Hopefully, we won't have to utilize those dollars. But right now, we're being conservative in that projection. And then in the future, there may be more need for that chemical. But right now, that's what we're hoping to do.
Thank you.
And I know you have some other things to proceed with this, so I'll just stay here and use your questions on that.
Sure. Any other comments? Saying none. I would make a motion, we close a public hearing.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Public hearing's been closed. I would make a motion that we consider a resolution authorizing filing of the application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Act.
Second.
Be the KSA nineteen eighty-eight, whatever, yeah. So all those made and seconded. All those in favor, it's a voice vote, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four nothing. Next up.
Approve the cost of effectiveness certification.
Go ahead, try it for it.
This is just part of the application that we'll put in. That one application. Okay. I move that we approve the cost and effectiveness certification.
I'll second that.
That's reasonable. That's because we got it in our budget. We'll be able to increase the price up to where we're looking at in two thousand twenty-four.
Cost of effectiveness is a KDAC requirement that we go through and talk about the improvements.
Yeah.
Efficient.
Okay. Okay.
That requirement.
Okay.
As part of the application.
Into that whole process that we went through to determine this project.
I'll second that.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the cost effectiveness certification. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four nothing. Next up.
Approve the applicant assurance of public participation for Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund Projects.
I so move that we approve the applicant assurance of public participation for Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund Projects.
Need a second?
I'll do that.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four oh. Next up.
Approve the lobbying certification.
And what's that? Explain what's this?
Yes, it's that no money that will be solicited or used or will be borrowed will be used for lobbying efforts.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the lobbying certification.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four nothing. Next up on the agenda. Yes.
Regarding this. So you've got the resolution. We are awaiting the final projections from the financial. Once I get that, we'll have that application, have that back to you. Get a sign, we'll have everything sent in. We're hoping by the end of the week, which means maybe beginning of next week, we'll have that to the city for signature.
I got one more question. On the, when we talked about with the company, most of these costs are still the same. I mean, we've still got some of those costs tied down.
Locked in.
Yeah, we've got quite a bit of it locked in right now. There are still some of the big ones that are out there trying to keep KDAC moving forward. The current contract had requested or included a certain work or give pipe rate for the full notice to see what will happen in recovery discussion. So we'll see how that works.
So how much later will we leave what we need?
The compliance plan.
I don't know, I hope by September.
Okay. Be in October. Okay.
Will those, will the new rate structure need to be approved by the commission before that?
It will not need to be approved by that point, but I would say when you can, you can start that whenever you so desire. But I would, that will probably be something that they will need. So I would say sooner is better than later, for sure.
I didn't know if the next, like the October fifth meeting was appropriate or if we needed to send it. Okay.
That we don't have the rate printed for us to go over?
Yeah, we'll have it before then.
Ready?
I mean, I need a sign set down before we head out tonight or that sounds like it.
Yeah, administration building, I would totally own the contract. I think they, one of the, five hundred thousand. I mean, all the jobs are, sent out a notice to, or request proposal Friday, the first of two P L. I sent it to eight contractors.
When's that supposed to be back?
October first.
October first, okay. Do we have any local contract, what do you mean?
Yeah, I sent it to seven. And I called Jelly's Construction, left a message, they haven't picked it up. Just wanted to give them a copy of it too.
Okay. All right, move on. Yes, ma'am.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a contract with Argus Construction LLC of Newton for construction of the Wilson Park Master Plan Phase One Upgrades Project and installation of the Creekstone Farms Pavilion at Wilson Park for an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
What happened to Farmer's Market thing?
That's what it is.
Is that all this?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is the concrete work and all the stormwater drainage and then to erect the structure.
That's the, that's Creekstone Farms Pavilion, that one. Okay. I guess I'm thinking about the rotunda too. Not included?
No, it's close to.
Not yet, huh?
No.
I thought we had.
You got the money for it.
Want to get some?
Friday.
Well, that, we've already purchased the structure.
Uh-huh.
And this is the, all the concrete work, the storm drainage, and then the erection of the, of the structure.
Okay. We didn't have a other part in that, did we?
What other part is that?
I thought, well, we had that amount of money that, is this just, that was up to six hundred thousand dollars of the work we're gonna do with the money we've gotten?
No. I mean, so you have some design work that's been done in the past. All the, the architecture work and then the structure itself was what, one seventy and one sixty-nine, somewhere around there. And then this, and then this here for three fifty-six.
Okay. I was thinking it was gonna get more than what we had. Okay.
Well, I didn't have as much money as you.
Creekstone Farms is donating three hundred thousand. The B.J. Wilkens Foundation, it looks like it's two hundred and five thousand plus. And then there's friends of Wilson Park.
So we're just using the three, three fifty-six of that money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I'm clear again.
I got a question, Mike, on this thing. Are we gonna have plenty of plug-ins and tap-in waters where we, like Taco Law, where we vendors them back in there and we can tap in their water right there easy and have plug-ins, be able to plug in trailers and stuff?
Yeah, and we're talking about the one where I have spigot on it. Also each day we'll have a separate plugin on it, plus we'll have up to five, I think, all the plugins just for the food vendors themselves.
Would it be like two twenty plug-ins for those bigger trailers? Okay.
Well, we should have plenty.
Okay.
We'll have internet.
Two water spigots on each end?
Yeah. Big water spigots there. We have to use that.
Or we just lay a hose to it and then, where we lay a hose from our trailer to the, to where it's coming out of the ground?
Yes.
Yeah.
Karen, did you guys put internet?
I'm sorry.
You asking about internet?
Yes.
Yeah, so we still have all that equipment that'll be installed once this is done, but Matt's waiting until all the construction is finished.
Oh, okay.
But there will be some internet Wi-Fi bounce receivers under the building as well as on the rooftop. So we should get pretty good.
All right.
Thank you.
And that back in the back alley there where it drains back that one lady's house, so that's all gonna be drained out. Where's, that water's not gonna be going to the, to the west right there.
We're focused that way, to the case, to the cash basis.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent. Well, I'd like to make a motion that we consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter into a contract with VOGS, Argus Construction LLC of Newton for construction of the Wilson Park Master Plan Phase One Upgrades Project and installation of the Creekstone Farms Pavilion for an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
I will second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries four oh. Next up.
There are first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article four of Arkansas City Municipal Code add a section two dash two seventy-nine to provide provisions for a chief of police as required by national accreditation standards.
What is that?
Somebody want to explain that for everybody?
He's got it. He's gonna pay what we needed.
Oh, sorry, chief, explain yourself.
We, we, we kind of know, but maybe nobody else does.
So this ordinance will help satisfy a KLEA standard.
Okay.
For our direction and command protocol policy. And in short, this is actually a short standard. So it's twelve point one point one within our accreditation program. It states a written statement issued by a unit of government in law or ordinance or combination thereof designates the authority and responsibility of the chief executive officer. So basically what it's doing is recognizing that the city government is giving me the authority to oversee the police department. That's what they ask.
And that will be part of the national accreditation standards?
Yes, as far as the police department.
Okay.
Can you, can you, for those that don't know, explain what KLEA is? There's, there's, it's an acronym for?
Yes, it's the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies.
Okay.
We've actually been involved in this program for about six years and we're looking to close that out in the first phase, possibly around March or April.
What do you mean, close it out?
Complete it.
It should be certified.
It might be certified. In that initial phase and then we have a continuation program.
Yeah. There's not many police departments in Kansas that is that, are they?
There's not, actually, less than ten. But it's growing.
Okay.
So with everything that transpired last year and with the scrutiny of law enforcement nationally, KLEA and other accreditation programs are becoming more popular because it's basically a guide. It's a playbook that law enforcement agencies can use that is best practices. And so we've been on this journey for quite some time and it's gonna be a relief to.
I'll tell you what, a lot of people, a lot of police departments across the country ought to be looking at us, how we're, how you guys are running things and probably would have, what's going on right now in some of these bigger cities.
I concur. I mean, it's more like a people department. You go out to the people.
And that's actually one of the benefits that we've seen through this accreditation program is it has standards for recruitment. And so when we looked at recruitment, we wanted to create a department that people would want to work for. And so what we did was the approach is going out into the community and just being part of the community and fostering some of those communication pieces. And predominantly, we just did a hiring process with Officer Casares was in that, that process. And pretty much everybody that we interviewed had mentioned relationship. So that is working.
It is. It's, it's, makes it worth the money that was spent to do that. Because it takes the money to do that and it was worth it.
With that being said, I make a motion, the first reading of ordinance amending chapter two, article four of the Arkansas City Municipal Code to add to a section two dash seventy-nine to provide visions for the chief of police as required by national accreditation standards.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. That's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager? Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Thanks, Chief Burr, thanks for all you do.
Yeah. Say yeah to her.
Yes.
Next up.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak. Harrison Taylor, five two five, North Fourth Street. I would just like to concur with Chief Burr about the quality of our police department. Pretty amazing to me. I've got two troubled youths that live across the street from me and the police are always stopping over there for one or the other. And the last time they stopped over, I saw the two male police officers out of their car tossing the football with these troubled boys and also some of the other boys in the neighborhood. So I just, and the experience I had meeting Chief Burr when I first arrived in town, everything has been very positive. So I would just like to say that I have my complete support.
Thank you. Mayor, I believe we should consider the first reading of an ordinance exempting the application KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquor at a designated area of Ben Givens City Senior Park during Arkalala on October 27th, 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Well, I would. I have, I do.
I'll give some word to our city attorney.
You can't second it.
Can't second it? We, I have, I have brought this up before. I mean, the Arkalala Committee every year wants this license. And we, most of commissioners feel that we, they, we should do it. And I was wondering if there's any way that we can have a ordinance that allows, I think, the city clerk to give them the liquor license for groups that we know. I know you have, they have to go through a process. Don't they go to the chief of police? And then do they go to, who else do they go to? I can't remember. But it would be nice if we can get an ordinance to where the, they don't have to go through all that. Because we know the Arkalala Committee and we approve it. And if somebody has, has given them an approval before, next year when they come in, they just have to say we want a new liquor license for Arkalala and the designated spot. Is there any way we can do that?
Update a previously given, I don't know, it's an interesting concept. I'll look into it.
Okay.
I mean, you're saying, give them a license. But it's an approval, a license for these, these, these particular days and then a year from now, these particular days.
Yeah.
Renew.
And renew it, renew that license.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into it. I, I don't know. I mean, there's, there's a procedure in place.
Yeah.
For, for reason, but I don't know the answer then.
It, it doesn't bother us, but it may be something that reduce some workload on somebody. I don't know how much work it is.
Then regrettably, they couldn't come here every year and sit through it.
That's right.
We might, we might change that idea, so they'll sit here and listen to it for.
Have your license if you come and sit.
So how, how would you like it? I got one quick question on, on everybody's, we're gonna be 21, will you be wearing bands when they come in or how you gonna, or should we look at driver's licenses? How you gonna do that?
Well, we currently don't have the signs at the entryways. It must be 21 to enter into the area. We're gonna have bottled liquor, bottle services. Law services. But we don't currently plan on using risk bands we can.
No, I just, I just.
I think that's up to the chief, chief. I think that's a good idea.
They have to have somebody to check them.
Yeah, they will check, they will check their ID.
Right.
But as far as risk bands, that's something we, that's got to pass against this now. It's never been issued on this new one. Right. And so from my experience, I know that we haven't had those issues in that area. Something that's really advantageous is the location.
Yeah. Right, by the police. Yeah, Robert.
But I think that, have you guys used bottle services yet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we haven't.
Haven't had any problem.
Any issues at all?
Perfect spot for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you talking about the Ben Givens Park or are you talking about the Beer Garden?
No, Ben Givens.
Beer Garden will be at the Ben Givens Park.
They.
Beer Garden is gonna be at the Ben Givens Park. It's been there in the past.
They put a fence around that area soon. It's fenced off. Correct, gentlemen?
They've had it there last.
It's been there a couple of times, I know.
Yeah.
There's one entry off the avenue, so it's not full entries and signs are up right there, so.
So was there any motion?
Yeah, motion's been seconded.
She made the motion? I seconded it a long time ago before I brought all this up.
We have any more discussion, uh, oh, anymore. This'll be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gager? Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells? Yes. Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you for.
Thank you for staying.
Oh, that's so sweet.
You don't think the rest of us, any, don't need to listen to it? We're bringing up ordinances.
Next up?
Consider the first reading of an ordinance adopting by reference standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 48th Edition, prepared and published in book form 2021 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
Mr. Mayor and commissioners, at that time of year, again, it's considered some of the changes in the standard traffic ordinance, Uniform Public Defense Code, just to refresh your memory a little bit, they're published in little booklets like this. It's really wonderful for our public office to have this. It outlines, you've probably seen all the law on this one. And first up, I think it was STO, wasn't it?
Yes.
So you, I think in your packet, you've got some of the proposed changes. I'm not sure how you want to do this. If you get a chance to review, if you'd like me to address some of these or just go through all of them very quickly, if you may, if you have a preference.
Whatever is easiest for you.
Yes, you can. And we went through them at the work session.
Okay, well, let me, do you have any questions about?
I had one question on the first one under, all about the all-terrain vehicles, the golf carts and stuff like that and, and the off-way, highway vehicles. What's, what's?
That was just a definitional section.
Okay.
But I will say this, that I, I know that we are looking at that as a separate ordinance to deal with that particular issue.
Okay. I know there's a lot of people driving, like on the side streets, you know, out where I live, there's a lot of people driving golf cart stuff, which I think is fine, you know.
I have reviewed an ordinance. I think our chief is reviewing.
Okay.
And so that'll be a separate thing from this.
Okay.
You're right, it wasn't noted in here, but it was just.
Yeah, I didn't know, yeah.
Definitional things.
Okay. Okay.
Was that ordinance in our packet, that section of that ordinance?
No.
Okay.
That's a separate thing we'll be looking at.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, the rest of it was just kind of, you know.
There was nothing really groundbreaking that changed there to this section. A lot of it was just clarifying things and, and putting more language into funeral procession, but it's just common sense things that we already do. Um, changing, uh, putting a leading standard just a little bit, but basically it's the same ordinance. Transporting an open container of alcohol beverage, but the ordinance didn't change. Another ordinance that may affect this will change. We'll be looking at that, but the ordinance is definitely not changed. A lot of these changes that were given to you were from the League of Municipalities that came to us as attorneys too, that they need, we'd be interested in, not necessarily ask to get it changed and there. I'm also writing on the vehicles with the same label, it's just a, a grammatical thing. And trying to comply with the traffic citation is, is not really what that was. It's under that section, but it has to do with someone who's going through a tough time being able to petition the municipal court for abatement of fines and costs under what would be called manifest hardship. That's, other than that, there's not, one thing that the citizens may be interested in, display of license plates. I found that interesting. I actually read that a couple of times. Some change in displaying license plates. Your regular car, your pickup, there's not gonna be a change, but some of the, the work vehicles, I, I think it comes to mind, they mentioned a concrete truck in there. You put it on the front or the back, I think. So some of those things employers may take a look at, semi-tractors will be on the front, to the back. Just, uh, uh, some, some interesting reading, I thought. Maybe that's just because I like more reading. But there, there wasn't twenty down where the license plate should be displayed.
Oh, that's interesting.
I mean, that's, that is probably an improvement on that ordinance, because on the back of a semi-tractor, you're not gonna see it. And a cement truck may have cement all over it, so put it someplace else.
And there were some, some dump trucks as well. When the work is at the back of the.
Right. Something makes sense.
Oh, there's a lot. There's just a lot.
There's, I mean, most of them are, like you said, the same ordinance as they just.
Just kind of proof of what the order to.
Yeah.
Words or some grammatical things.
So.
But the substance of the ordinance.
Be the same.
New ordinances, but it goes along.
Well, not hearing anything from anyone, I will move that we approve an ordinance adopting by reference to standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's 48th Edition, prepared and published in book form in 2021 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
All right, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells? Yes. Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Next on the agenda?
Consider a first reading of an ordinance adopting by reference the Uniform Public Defense Code for Kansas City's 37th Edition, prepared and published in book form in 2021 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
I haven't seen it. This is the book form. Got the same size as the other one. This one, just a few things I'll mention. I'll just run, there's not very many, so I'll run through these quickly. Sexual battery historically had excluded this offense that you could do against your spouse. It's outdated and it was updated because it is an out-of-date provision. So sexual battery can be, be victimized by your spouse and can be proven up that way. Section 5.5 Watercraft, what that had to do with was, um, the flotation devices or that can be used, life jackets, what we call it, for those 12 and under. Uh, the, the previous version had listed some, some specific statutes. And this one said, instead of doing that, let's just say whatever our, our wildlife people will tell us that we could use each year for changes, we're gonna adopt that by reference. We don't have to come back and change our ordinance. That's really all that is. 6.2 Intent to permanently deprive, whenever you prove up a crime, you have what's called elements. And that's really a definition of the statutes. It had in Arkansas City, in whatever all the other elements are. Intent to permanently deprive is one of the elements of theft. And the, uh, the legislature gave us the opportunity to include this, which would be helpful to our city prosecutor. Should be thankful to you if you pass this, for theft of a motor vehicle, that if there is a, a vehicle chase, that that would be prima facie case, which means on its face, and the defense will say, hey, wait, no, I, I didn't do that. They'd have to bring a defense. The verdict proof never shifts the defense, but making a prima facie case, case for the prosecution is very helpful to start out with. So that's what that is. Section 6.7.2 really catches us up on, uh, the trespassing. Some people don't realize that it's kind of difficult to convict on criminal trespass sometimes. There is, it's not just if you were there. There's some, there's some elements to it that are part of it. We have some help here when it comes to infrastructure facilities, and this particular ordinance was 16 of them. But it has to do with power grids, it has to do with water treatment plants, it has to do with, and even, even private companies that help with these particular infrastructure things. It can also be protected, this ordinance. And I said they're listed out in the ordinance. So that's very appreciative to actually have that. 7.1 unlawfully tampering with electronic monitoring equipment has to do with intended that we placed on electronic monitoring. Currently, our, our municipal court doesn't use that. I don't think they ever have. And if they ever do, it would be nice, you would really need that. And it's a, has a separate offense. Um, section 7.5 has to do with distribution of unattributed applications for advanced voting ballots. What in the world is that? Advanced ballots can go out and people send them out. And this just says that, okay, if you're gonna send it out, you have to identify who you are and you have to make sure that they have information enclosed in your writings, that they send it back, including an envelope addressed to where they should send it back and not sending it back to you as the person that sent it out. And it's just a way of saying, hey, let's make sure that there's no middleman. When somebody's actually cast vote, it needs to go right to where the vote should be collected. That's what that is. That's 7.14 made some changes in collection earring. And basically you'll have to wear, have a bumper sticker on your car within 250 feet of a polling place. But also has to do with any of, if anyone that's running for office, let me just put it this way, read the ordinance for yourself, but, but just don't handle anybody's ballot. If you're on the ballot that you're.
Leave it alone.
That's the easiest.
Leave it alone. Yeah, I, I don't know why there'd be a temptation. I don't know why that had to be a law, but that is, leave it alone. Uh, section 9.3 violation of executive order, we talked a little bit about that the other day. It's just basically gonna do with curfew, prohibition of public entry, whenever there's been an executive order that had to do with a disaster and something behind. And then section 11.3 was just a grammatical error in that very long statute, a statute ordinance. And really grammatical errors is the only correction. Any questions about any of those that we? I thought they were, they were pretty, fairly easy to understand, but sometimes the heading that they were put under and what they actually were was, I didn't, on first blush, I didn't read it that way either. So any questions?
Bullfrog going off.
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion, we consider the first reading of, reading of an ordinance adopting by reference the Uniform Public Defense Code for Ki- for Kansas City's 37th Edition, prepared and published in book form in 2021 by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wells? Yes. Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
That was fun.
That's very exciting.
Quite exciting.
Thing next up is the city manager's update. So in your package, you have a coming update or a report on upcoming activities. I'll just kind of give you the highlights. So, uh, September 23rd, 5 to 7, we have an aloha party planned for saying goodbye to Pam Crane and welcoming Jill Hunter over at Visit Ark City. So there to Burford, so make sure you make it over for that. City staff, we'll meet with our project consultant on the CBDG North Summit Resurfacing Project. That'll be at 10 a.m., 10 a.m. on Monday, September 27th. Kind of get all the ducks in a row on that project. Of course, the next city commission study session will be October 1st and my office on Friday at noon. City staff, we're gonna participate in the, uh, it'll be virtual this year, the Department of Transportation Local Consult Meeting. So that'll give us a chance to pitch some local projects that we want to see added to the, to the state's transportation plan, so. Um, and then the National Night Out Kickoff Party will be from 5 to 8 p.m. on Monday, October 4th at Wilson Park. Uh, and then the land bank meeting will be at the, just before the next city commission meeting at 5 p.m. on October 5th here in City Hall.
I'll write that down so I don't forget.
Thank you. Anything else, Rod?
Andrew, when is it? I got my water bill and I actually looked inside the water bill. When? I know there's a lot of questions that come up about when's the cleanup in October.
So we designated October 9th, I believe, as Fall Cleanup Day. And that will consist, what we want to do is kind of clean up sidewalks in downtown area, the perimeter of downtown area before Arkalala. But we're also gonna be assessing sidewalks and that's kind of a kickoff for that effort, but that'll actually go throughout the entire city over the next few months. That's part of the transportation master plan. We're gonna do that piece in-house. So if you know people that like to walk, get them in touch with me because we, we have to train them a little bit. There's a really easy to use app that Josh created on our website where anyone can report a sidewalk issue. And he'll collate all that data, so we can start cleaning it or some kind of plan. So what we're looking at is where it's missing, where it's cracked and broken and needs replacement, where it's not able to fly and those kinds of things. So we're kind of trying to combine that together, but if someone's wanting to do other kinds of volunteer work, turn them away. I know probably somebody's falling by then, so do that sort of stuff like we always do. And then the extra pickup weight for the fallen, I think is the 12th through 15th. So that's when you'll put extra trash out and get them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Also want to mention, we will be applying for cost share on North Summit Street, that's due Friday. So cross your fingers. It's, we'll try.
Okay.
Can't get it if you don't try.
It's a frustrating program because.
I know.
We are guidelines, so we'll, we'll take a look for tech this time and see if it's more successful.
Hopefully. Thanks.
I did also want to mention, I'll be going.
I did also want to mention, I'll be gone with the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce in Reap on next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we'll be going to Oklahoma City and looking at their maps program and seeing some of the things that they do down there to, to really, you know, their quality of life, things that they're doing, so I'm hopefully bringing back some, some ideas for our community.
Sounds good. Thanks.
I'll make a motion this year.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded, thank you, guys.
Yeah.
On favor?
I'll say aye, get on the go.
I'll stay in silence.